We will call the meeting back to order. We are returning from closed session with no reportable action. Roll call?
Councilmember Barnes?
Raise.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Here.
Councilmember Spurr?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Matina?
Here. We'd like to observe a moment of silence for Lake County Deputy Rob Brumfelt, who passed away on August 22, 2017. Okay, there'll be a ceremony for Brumfelt this Saturday at 10 o'clock at the Clearlake High School, if anyone wants to attend. No parking on the campus, so get a ride or walk in. Next, if you'll join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for joining us. If anyone wants to speak on something not on the agenda, there's citizen input forms. I don't think we have any, maybe here on anything separate. Otherwise, wait for an agenda item to come talk to us. Next, we have acceptance of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to accept the agenda.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, on the consent agenda, we have waive the reading except by title of any ordinance, approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of August 15, approve the warrant register of August 23, and approve a new classification for a permit technician with a salary range 38, earning $3,208 to $4,065 per month. Does anyone want to talk about anything? Anyone from the public? Okay. Take a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen input. Kelly, do we have any input tonight?
Nope.
Darn it. Next, we have an employee introduction.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I wanted to introduce our newest police officer, Kayleen Strudnell, to you, the staff, and the public.
Could you mind switching sides with her so the camera can see her face or the public can recognize our new officer?
Good idea.
Anyway, Kayleen is 24 years old. She's lifelong resident of Lake County. She graduated from Cusseville High School. Then she went on to Mendocino College where she got a degree in administration of justice. She worked for a period of time as an EMT for the Lake Park Fire District. She remains an EMT today. After that, she went on to work for a year as a deputy and correctional officer with the San Cruz County Sheriff's Office, but decided that she wanted to be home back in Lake County. And we happened to be testing at the time she came back. She tested, she was one of our top candidates. She got hired, and now she's our newest officer. So I wanted to introduce her to everyone tonight.
Welcome. Don't you want to tell us about your first week? She's quick. Now we know, she's quick. Welcome. All right, on to council business. Public Works Director authorized the replacement of the eight-inch well pump.
Mayor, Council. This item has been brought back to council. We had brought it to council at an earlier time. And there was, council had some questions concerning our bi-local policy. So staff took and researched that. And after completely researching that, checking with our city attorney, we're bringing this back to you as presented originally. And the difference being that, being this pump includes the installation and some electrical work and other things, that makes it a public work. And being that it is a public work, it falls under our Uniform Cost Accounting Code for construction, which does not allow for a local preference. So we're bringing back to you. And if you have any questions, I'm sure David could answer those much better than I could. But we're bringing back to you the original award and asking council to award that.
Thanks, Doug. Any questions?
I was just kind of taken back when I see that this thing was put in '78. It's like, you know, it almost lasts almost 40 years. Do you think we'll get that kind of longevity out of it anyway?
Unfortunately, Mr. Gradyk is retired.
No.
So I think the answer to that is unfortunately, no.
You put Band-Aids on that thing for the last 20 years?
Yes, very much so.
We got our money's worth out of that one, for sure. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you for doing that research. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So is there other things that doesn't get the discount, I mean, other than the public works ones?
No, the distinction is between whether or not something is a public work under the Public Contracts Code or whether or not it's a good or service. So public works has a term of art that the Public Contract Code provides the meaning of. And part of that is work within stream beds and whatnot. What our purchasing ordinance covers is when we're buying just a thing, you know, we're buying, you know, a computer.
A tool.
Or a service, right? We're contracting to get someone to do, you know, background investigations or legal services or something. And when it comes to goods and services, then cities are, they're obligated to enact a purchasing ordinance. And there are some limitations on what those can say and what they can't. So under our purchasing ordinance, there is this local preference that can be in there. However, when it comes to a public work, that is regulated by the state under the Public Contracts Code. And therefore, the city doesn't have any discretion to go around the state mandate. And the state does not allow for special provisions for local contractors or whatnot.
Okay, so would streets be public works or would that be a sales service?
Yeah.
So I mean, if we had somebody that did, which we don't, that would fix roads, and we had a bid, we wouldn't be able to give them a discount either because they get the same as everybody else.
That's right. If we are repaving a street, that's a public work. Under the Uniform Cost Accounting Act, there are provisions that would allow the city to do a lot of that on its own.
Right.
Right, which then there's no bidding whatsoever. But if it is a project under the Public Contract Code that has to be bid, then we have to award it to the lowest responsible bidder without regard to the location of that individual. And that's really, you know, an issue that comes out of our constitution and the Commerce Clause, which requires governments to act fairly when it comes to all businesses throughout the country. That's where that comes from, in terms of the absence of a local preference in the Public Contract Code.
I did not know that.
Yeah, because, I mean, the county has things for, you know, female business owners that give discounts for those and they give discounts for local and stuff. So basically, we wouldn't give a discount to anything that's public works, no matter what.
That's California, we'd be, yeah.
Yeah.
The county would be under similar restrictions then, since it's a federal law?
No, it's a state.
State law, state constitution.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we'd have to read the county policy again, but I'm certain that, you know, if it's a state law, they'd have to follow it too.
Yeah, definitely. Because, I mean, there used to be things that give veterans and...
There are federal laws that, you know, like affirmative action-type situations where minority-owned businesses, and those are federal. And that would apply to a federal funded project.
Sorry I took it down that road, but I just kind of want to know in the future, you know, what we should question about, so.
But there's a difference, George, in those kinds of things. They really don't get a discount per se, particularly with federal funds, which when a lot of these programs kick into effect, they set a participation goal. And so what it is, is that any awarding agency, which would be the city or the county, has to solicit and encourage participation from women-owned, disadvantaged, veteran... There's a whole list of, and typically they're subcontractors, not prime contractors, that are encouraged to participate in the public work. And in federal, and they're trying to change it again, but where it stands right now is, is that you have a requirement to, for DBE participation in federally funded public works. That goal has arrived through a formula. Ours is filed with Caltrans. So that if we have a federally funded project, then we have a goal that was determined. And the contractor that is awarded the low bid has an obligation to meet that goal. Now, there's some exclusions on them, but they're very, very difficult to make that. And, you know, it's called a good faith effort, and believe me, it's highly scrutinized. So I think that maybe that was kind of what you were thinking, and the county does that, or we did it when I was there, anyway. So, but that's particularly to federal funding.
So the distinction is whether or not it's a public work or whether or not it's a good or service. And that is a legal determination at the end of the day.
So when there is a local preference, isn't it something around, like you get a benefit of like 10% or something like that, if you're within 10%?
That's what the council said.
Yeah, and so the good news is, is that even if it were 10%, this local person is more like 11 or 12, so they're outside of that, so that we don't have to feel bad about it.
Anyone from the public?
Yeah, and actually, there's goods and services you can't provide that on either. If any of the money comes from the state or federal, then you can't use that, even if it's, even if it's for a good or service with those funding. It comes from one of those changes.
Okay. I understand that.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the replacement of the eight-inch well pump and award the contract to Valley Pump and Motor Works as described in the bid package.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have an informal bid award to replace the failing HVAC system at the corpyard. Doug?
It's been rather warm out there. Madam Mayor, council members. What we're asking for is for council approval to proceed with a bidding process. We're looking at changing the system that we have. Right now, we have a rooftop system, very similar to what we have here on City Hall. We've looked into the building structure that we have at the Corporation Yard for public works offices. And there is a new system, or, well, for me, a new system. It's called a split zone system. We've looked at it really closely. We feel that that would be actually a better fit with some potential long-term cost savings in energy use. Each, there's four offices at the corpyard. Each office has its own unit mounted on the wall with a large unit mounted on the outside. If someone is not in their office, the unit can be turned off, particularly in the wintertime. Or in the summer, they're not going to be in their office all day. We can turn that unit off, shut their door. Then we're not paying to heat or cool that office that's not in use. And so we're pretty excited about it. Unfortunately, I have not had time to, we're looking for a commercial unit, not a residential unit, which there's plenty of those around, not too many commercial ones. So I'm still in the process of trying to come up with specifications and to get proposals out and ask for, you know, of course, we'll go local on that. There'll be an informal bid, so we'll solicit local HVAC people for that. So with that being said, yes, it's been very warm. Our unit's been out for three weeks now. So we really hope the council will find it within their heart to let us proceed with this.
Questions? How old's that unit?
The one that's on there is a little over 10 years old, which is about the life expectancy, according to everybody I talked to for those rooftop models. So the one that we're looking at with the split zone, they're talking 10 to 15 years is their lifespan as well. So it seems to be 10 years for a commercial cooling unit. And then you're going to have to start putting money into it. And nowadays, it doesn't take much, and you're better, going to be better off just replacing it.
But the cost for that system doesn't look much different than a regular central system, but they're so much more efficient.
And that's definitely the reason that we're looking at the split zone, is we think that that could be, you know, a real cost savings to the city with a much better system.
Is there room in the attic to install all that wiring and...?
It'll actually be on the back wall. And then we'll go through conduits and come through the outside wall into the unit that's on the inside of the office. And so you don't really have anything that runs through the ceiling on those units.
But you're going to see it on the outside wall? That's the thing with those, is some of the installations I've seen are so bad.
Well, if it's too ugly, we'll just put a little shed around it. But it's the Corporation Yard, so aesthetics wasn't the top of our list.
Well, that's the thing I was thinking, though. I mean, if it's on the outside wall, I'm assuming they're going to insulate it from the heat, right?
It's not ductwork, it's just...
Well, it's got to get from the main unit split up.
Right. It has an insulation that goes on the tubing that goes into those units. Yes, it does.
Because, I mean, you'd be losing some of your efficiency if you wouldn't, so.
Right. It's on the north-facing wall, so we've kind of taken all that into consideration. And we think it'll be a good fit.
Any other questions?
There's no further questions. Madam Mayor, I move to authorize staff to proceed with the informal bidding process to replace the failing HVAC system at the Corporation Yard office and authorize a budget adjustment not to exceed $20,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second before we take that vote. Anyone from the public? Okay. What say you? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Keeping it moving. And I think Doug wants something else. Next, we have a sewer pump replacement. It's the Doug and Pony Show.
Seriously, I was looking at the agenda going, this is just not fair. Madam Mayor, council members. Unfortunately, we, with this particular pump, we're attributing part of the issue here with the INI that we had over the winter. Our pump systems were running 24/7, nonstop. So unfortunately, that's accelerated the wear and the tear and the deterioration of some of our sewer pumps. This one is on its last legs. We only have one replacement. It's very similar to the Lyricu situation that we had, except this is a different pump, a different-sized pump. What we're asking council's authorization to go ahead and purchase this pump, which will actually be in our reserve, so that we have, so that we have a pumping reserve.
Okay. So right now, we don't have a pumping reserve?
Right now, we don't have a pumping reserve.
Any questions? Anyone from the public? Councilmember Barnes?
I'm just wondering, since this was accelerated by the storms we had, could any of it be covered by FEMA?
No.
That's a simple answer.
I'm sure Doug thought of this.
So from what I've heard over the years, these sewer pump stations, if they're not functioning properly and we have some kind of disaster, it can cost us what, millions and hundreds of dollars?
Millions, correct.
Yeah, so a $30,000 backup plan is not a bad idea. It won't go to waste and be used eventually.
It will go to waste.
Yeah, the waste will go through it, yeah.
All right. Can't remember. Anyone from the public? We need to recruit some...
Some people in the comments.
All right, we'll bring it back to council. Any further discussion? Then we'll take a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the purchase of a new, oh, darn, I was going to have to... I don't know how to pronounce this name, by the way.
Flight.
Thank you. Authorize the purchase of a new 45-horsepower flight submersible pump pursuant to the quoted amount and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now Doug has some contract change orders for us on the Geiselman waterline replacement project.
Correct. Madam Mayor, council members, before you, you have three change orders. Change order number three, which is for the negotiated price for an additional 11 one-inch services that were installed. Change order number four was to add an additional 40 feet of eight-inch water main. Upon replacing the valving under Geiselman, we discovered that the main going down sayer was in very poor condition where it ran underneath Geiselman from the valve cluster. So being we were paving Geiselman, we thought it to be most prudent to replace that possibly failing section outside of the new paving limits. And so that was what change order number four was for. And then change order number five is what we call a balancing change order. And that's where we've gone and done actual quantities. And this one is an actual minus. So the contract quantities came in on some items a little bit less than what was bid. And so we have a deduct for that quantity that was not installed.
Okay. Glad we're planning ahead. Any questions?
Yeah, why do we have 11 that we weren't, why is there 11 more?
Well, Georgia, to be perfectly honest with you, that's called human error. And...
I was just wondering if, you know...
New people.
Well, if we just didn't know these existed or whatever.
No, unfortunately, with plans, you go through about a dozen renditions. You start out with a basic plan, and then everybody starts reviewing it and looking at it. And it's like, oh my goodness, no, we need to fix this, or this is wrong, we need to change this. And that's all done in layers. And sometimes when you're putting all these layers back together for your final, sometimes a wrong layer gets put in. And so it was just a simple mistake that those weren't put in the original, the original contract. And so as a consequence, when we were reviewing it, we saw where it had the note for those. Unfortunately, they weren't on the plans. So that one, it just escaped by all of us that were looking at it. We didn't catch it.
You know, I know you do a very good job, so I was just kind of curious. Why is these 11 there?
Yeah, that's called an oops.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Okay, bring it back to council. Any other discussion?
If not, Madam Mayor, I move to authorize city manager to sign contract change orders number three, four, and five with Green Rightaway Constructors Incorporated for the additional work on the Geiselman waterline replacement project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the League Annual Conference Resolution. Doug, it's been a pleasure, but this will be Margaret.
Actually, annually, the League California Cities Annual Conference, at the end of the conference, they bring up resolutions to be passed by the voting delegates from each community. And so there were two this year, two resolutions that they're asking, that will be brought up at the meeting. And what we're asking here is for council direction for the representative that will be at the meeting as to how they will vote, which it leaves Councilman Turner as our voting member. So having said that, both of them have to do with law enforcement. I've asked Police Chief to take a look at those and maybe give you an opinion from the police position on these and then we have discussion to see how council would like to direct Councilman Turner on that vote. Would you like me to read the titles of those resolutions?
Sure.
The first resolution is, "Calling Upon the Governor and the Legislature to Enter Into Discussion With the League and Other Public Safety Stakeholders to Identify and Implement Strategies That Will Reduce the Unintended Negative Impacts of Assisting Criminal Law." And then, which, that's from the Prop 47 and the...
Prop 57?
Yeah, Prop 57. I'm trying to think, and re, once it redesigned, but then...
Realigning.
And then the second resolution is a resolution of League California Cities Supporting Legislation Amending Government Code Section 38611 to Clarify the Definition of Local Control Providing For Statutory Authority for Local Officials to Determine Emergency Service Levels and Direct Emergency Medical Response Within Their Jurisdictions. So with that, gratitude, and I'll say a few words.
Sure. Well, starting with number one, I have to say that I'm in full support of the League of Cities' work in trying to go back to the governor legislature and try to make some changes on some of the issues that we're seeing now with AB 109, which was a realignment that was implemented in 2011. And by the way, we've been talking about this stuff off and on for about six years now. And then Prop 47 came along in 2014. And then further, Prop 57 was last year in 2016, which changed the releases on some of the sentenced felons that are in prison or will be sentenced by judges to go to prison. In fact, your council was in opposition of Prop 57 last year when we brought that before you. But some of the things that, for example, that I know that they want to look at is, in current California law, you've got a penal code section that lists what are, under the law, called violent felonies. You've got another one that lists, under the law, what are called serious felonies. Well, in fact, many of those serious felonies are, in fact, violent felonies in their nature. And that's how the average citizen would see it if they looked at it. But unfortunately, right now, some of those are, they're considered nonviolent felonies because they aren't listed there. And so there are releases, and people are getting time off their sentences right now. So that's one thing that needs to be looked at. And just the whole, the whole combination of these three things, in my opinion, have created a serious concern for public safety in California communities and also very serious safety concerns for peace officers in California communities. In fact, the suspect that killed the Sacramento Deputy Sheriff last week, and from what I understand, should not have been out of custody and was somebody that benefited from some of these changes. So I'm in full support, and I would urge the council to, you know, consider all these things. And then as far as number two, that's more of a public safety related to local, would ensure local control on having input with what your local EMS, for example, fire department, would respond to. would respond to. So that's just looking to change the government code to provide the more broad statutory authority for local officials to determine, to, or to have input in emergency service response for, primarily for, for medical and fire-type responses. And might be available to answer questions if anybody has any, but that's kind of a summary of my knowledge of them.
Great.
And my belief of those.
Questions?
No, I, I read the, the thing, and I was really shocked on what they thought was nonviolent crimes. It's like, those sound violent to me.
Yeah.
Well, as the average person, they are violent in nature. They're just not titled that way. And they really need to be, if this is the way the law is going to go, then it needs to be changed back to expand that list of violent crimes.
The, the thing that, being involved intimately with daily street crimes, I'm talking to the chief numerous times, I'm talking to law enforcement officers from other areas. Talked to Rob Brown the other day and was talking about the overwhelming costs being accrued by the jail out there maintaining it, because the state's basically shoved all of their problems onto county jurisdictions for us to take care of it. The biggest problem that I think, that, and Chief and I have talked about this many times, is, and he quoted to me, that the loss prevention guy over at, at Kmart said in one year, $295,000 worth of shoplifting. Shoplifting is just incredible, and with the, you know, the 57 and 47. And to me, the biggest fraud that I've seen in voter history is the name, the Public Safety and Rehabilitation Act was Proposition 57, and there's nothing about public safety and rehabilitation that I can see in that, and that is just an outright total fraud. And people that go into the voters booths, and they're looking at that, and they haven't done their homework. A lot of people don't really study their booth, their, you know, before they get into the booth, and they vote for something, and we've all were against it, all the League of Cities was against it, and it went through, and the unintended consequences are so far-reaching because now all the shoplifters have an absolute free rein, and they're running rampant. All the companies have policies, many of them, Safeway, Kmart, Walmart, hands-off, don't touch them, they walk out the door. If you do a citizen's arrest, which Safeway will not engage in, Kmart and a lot of them will not get involved. If you do do it, used to be after three events, then they were considered felons. Now they can go on shoplifting until hell freezes over, and they never become felons and never go to prison. And so it's just created this can of worms that is unbelievable in all the small municipalities throughout Lake County, and it's horribly wrong. And the League of Cities has vetted this. They've done their homework. We've got all the cities involved in it. This is something that really needs to be pushed on, because they did, they turned up the criminal system upside down with all of this baloney with 47, AB 109, and 57. It was a horrible thing. Crime was on a downward spiral. Now it's going up like crazy because there's no accountability. We can't even get anybody to come out on a shoplifting because literally they say, well, all we're going to do is sign and release. All we're going to do is sign and release. So they know it's open season on all retailers everywhere. So it needs to be changed. I think we need to go a step further and get into a letter writing campaign and back the, the League of Cities and get our legislators and the governor to realize this was a horrible mistake, that the people didn't fully understand it, and the unintended consequences are so far-reaching and so expensive to counties and cities that it's just out of control. That's my two cents. Am I passionate about that?
No, it's true. Like, you know, most people that I talk to don't realize what 47 and 57 meant. They still don't realize. And it's affecting our communities and our neighborhoods more than anything. So when people were so upset with the last elections, I said, you know, listen, are you familiar with 47 and 57? These are going to affect you day to day, and you still don't know about it. So I'm glad the league is taking it on, and hopefully we can make some changes. Anyone from the public? All right, bring it back to council for last discussion. For a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to move to direct the city of Lake Forest's voting delegates to the League of City, California Cities Annual Conference to support the two resolutions provided in the annual conference resolution package. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, city council communications. Margaret?
Yeah, I just wanted the public to know, and I, you know, just, the council know that we, you authorized the program for, to appoint a, excuse me, assistant city manager. Couldn't get that out. Anyway, so our first candidate that has been approved for the program is the city department head to have an opportunity to, still have to, they still have to cover their department, but they get enough train to learn about other departments and have special projects outside their department. So our first assistant city manager will be Kevin Ingram. So, so, yeah, I'm very excited about starting the program out, and Kevin's already busy getting to know other departments and what their strategies.
Cool. David?
Nothing to report, other than that I'll hopefully see a lot of you in Sacramento for the conference.
Great. Doug?
I said enough tonight.
Nick?
Nothing to report.
Chief?
Nothing further tonight, thank you.
Kevin?
Nothing further to report?
What?
You'll hear from me at the next meeting.
Okay. Kelly?
Just that I'll be out next week at the Sacramento Conference. So excited.
Yes, that's the thing, I forgot. It's the motion thing. Next week, since we're going to be out for the League of California Cities, and Brad and Kevin and I are going to be there, and Kelly's going to be, Doug will be our acting city manager next week.
Time to give yourself a raise.
Yeah.
I've already been warned, George.
Councilmembers Burr?
Nothing.
Councilmember Parlet?
I'm just looking forward to being there with the whole team over at the California League of Cities, and I think it's just one of the greatest things that's ever happened to local government, and I'm looking forward to a great time there and spending some time with our team.
I think it's the first time in the last six years that all five councilmembers are going, so we should be able to bring back a lot of information. Councilmember Barnes?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Turner?
Nothing.
I attended that economic, what did we attend, what was it called?
The economic forecast for the state, local, and federal areas, and...
It was excellent.
Yes.
Slow and steady, so...
It's the economy.
Sounds good to me. So thanks for coming. Meeting adjourned.